All right, we're going to call to order the special work session for Thursday, February 20th for the engineering, where is it at here? Engineering and natural, natural resources. We are in the Board of Supervisors hearing room in Melody Lane in Bisbee pursuant to ARS 38431.02H. The public will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Board of Supervisors will attend either personally or by telephone or video teleconferencing. Members of the public may also attend the meeting via Microsoft Teams or by the mobile app or by phone. Work sessions are at time for county staff inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. We'll begin with a roll call vote, District One.
Mr. Crosby is still with you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, District Two.
Gomez is here.
And District Three, Antonorius here. All three supervisors are present, Mr. Crosby via Microsoft Teams. We will begin with Ms. Watkins beginning with her briefing.
Thank you, supervisors. This is the quarterly update for the Engineering Division of the department. And just to give you a little idea of what the department does, we do right-of-way permits and inspections. This last calendar year, we updated the forms on our special use permits. And we have, we had 14 special events for right-of-way. There was the Turdizona, the Bisbee coaster races, because part of that starts up in the county. Fun runs and parades, if they're on county roads, they have to get, have a permit, and we monitor the traffic. We did 400 right-of-way permits, and we have major ongoing utility projects that are still happening in the county with Sanzia. So Sanzia is a transmission line that goes across the county, in the northern part of the county. And they finished their DC line, it's completed. They will now start doing their AC line. And their AC line then will have on and off sites that, you know, so people in the county, if there's a solar farm, they can actually then get onto the AC line. And Valley Telecom is updating their fiber optic stuff, mostly in the Wilcox area. And then Allo Fiber is doing their work over in the serviced area. And we do signing, so we have about 40,000 signs throughout the county, regulatory signs and street name signs. And we have 568 blue states, so whenever you put in a new poll for new signs, you have to call Blue State for utility location. And there's about 1,500 new sign faces for signs that were new, not just a replacement sign. We also do development reviews for commercial and special use, when they have special use zoning, for development reviews on access and how it is impacting traffic on the adjacent roads. These are our department product, projects. This is actually the intersection of Davis and 191. Oh, okay. Then Mosin Road is a project that's in design. We had a million dollars from the serviced NPO to help with the design on this project. We have 6.1 million in state earmark funds. The design is costing 1.8 million. It's going to cost around $2 million for right-of-way on that road. It's a 7.8 mile road. We have right-of-way perfected on 97 properties, and we still need to acquire on 49 properties. This is being administered through ADOT because there is federal funds involved. We will have in April the, a rollout plot of what the design is. And what we're doing is adding shoulders on the road. We should have our environmental clearance done by toward the end of the year. Estimated construction costs, if we did the whole project at once, is 25 to 30 million. We will pursue grants, and we are, out of that 6.1 million with the 8.8 million and the 2 million for right-of-way, we'll have around $3 million left to do a portion of the road. And so we will do it at milepost 5.5 for the culverts up on that upper right. You see those culverts there? And that's at a big dip section on Mosin Road. And it gets flooded and closes the road. And the site distance going into and out of that dip section is limited, very limited. So this is the most safety issue that we can do to, on that road, to help with the traffic. And we should have design completed in 2026 and depending on grants, when we would do more construction besides that one location to put some box culverts in there. Davis Road is a project, so we've been working on different projects on David Brooks Road since 2003. We, around 2010, we started doing investigation on drainage issues, because when it monsoon, Davis Road frequently gets closed for a day or two, sometimes depending. And so we had it designed like by 2015 and for its relocation locations at milepost 5, 13. We constructed the crossing, the bridge structures that we have there on milepost nine. But we constructed that during monsoon, and as you can see, there's surveyors out there, you know, because the road had flooded, trying to survey it. But to do milepost five and 13, we have, we were awarded 2.8 million from Senator Kelly's discretionary funds. We'll use 3.6 million of County Herf funds. It's under design now to upgrade, update the current designs we have, because since the designs are over about 10 years old, so we have to get updated NEPA clearance. ADOT does have oversight of construction when we get it, and we hope to start that construction towards the end of this year, calendar year.
Now, is this, this is not, are you buying or taking any land from any people?
We've already done that. We already have perfected right-of-way on this, these two locations.
So that's all done.
The point of the project is the culverts, right?
The culverts, yes, for the drainage.
That's where it kind of goes, like, first.
Yeah, milepost five is where the gas.
Okay, where those, you see those?
And milepost 13 is the other place that gets closed, because people, you know, drive down, you're, you're at milepost 13, the road's closed, you have to turn around, then you have to go all the way through Bisbee to get to that.
Right.
And then milepost five, there will be a slight realignment.
Realignment and, and on the curve there, because that curve, there's been, I think, five semis turn over there in the last two years.
But this doesn't include, does this include anything as far as expanding it to, to AC2?
No, no.
This is just the flooding.
About what's done at milepost nine, where we have the guardrail on milepost nine. It's the same thing. It's widening it with eight-foot shoulders and big culvert, culverts, bridge structures underneath. So it's the same thing. Then Davis Road, Highway 80 to Central, we have a RACE grant for just over $2 million to do a study and get 30% engineering design plans and the NEPA clearance so we could start acquiring right-of-way. A study was done back between 2010 and 2015 that said because of the traffic, at some point in history, it would be a four-lane highway. And this is an IGA we have with, well, we will get the IGA with the county and federal highways sometime this year. Federal highways is just on hold right now with all grants. The estimated construction cost would be 73 million. Obviously, we would have to find grants to do any of that, and that's 22 miles.
That's due to the two lanes both.
Well, that would, that would be a long time for now, yes.
And is this part of acquiring any land?
This would be, so once you have, you have to have NEPA clearance before you can start acquiring land. So once we get the NEPA clearance, then we could go out and start acquiring.
And this is right around where the school is, isn't it?
No, that's, that's the next slide.
That's the next slide. So where is this, because I was seeing this like right here.
Yeah, that is the school, but Highway 80 for to Central, from Central to Highway 80 is what this project is, just as a study and a concept design then?
So, so where does it go? I mean, I'm, you're talking about just south of Tombstone, all the way across to Central Highway.
It goes all the way.
Davis Road, it's, it's just.
No, I got, I got it, so I'm trying, why, what? Goes from nowhere to nowhere, that's what I'm saying. It's not like it's going straight from Tucson to Wilcox.
A lot of people.
It's a, it's a heavily trafficked, it's, there's over 1,000 cars a day that use it. It's one of the heavier, not some, just, just personal, because if you live in Douglas, it is quicker to go through Davis Road, you don't have to climb the hill in Bisbee.
Yeah, that's the way I always go.
Where?
To Tucson.
To Tucson.
Yeah, Douglas to Tucson.
They don't go straight up to 191 to the highway, they cut through Davis?
Yeah, because that's, that's a much faster.
Yeah, I don't drive from Douglas.
45 minutes or something like that.
Okay.
That really takes you out of the way.
But you're, you're talking about eventually making that a four-lane?
If the traffic ever, yes. Right now, we're not doing, no, we are not doing a four-lane.
So we acquire through just voluntary?
No, we purchase.
But that's what I'm saying, we, we go out there and say, hey, we want to buy your land, let's get an appraisal, and we pay you the praise value, or do we condemn it?
Well, there's questions.
It depends. So I'm on the next slide, but.
Oh, okay.
Because this is Davis Road from Central to Highway 191.
Okay.
That's designed, yes.
It's kind of straight, right?
And this is planning from 2015 to 2023. We have engineered plans that we're updating so that we can go for funds to construct. So we are acquiring the right-of-way from 191 to Central. We have 11 properties that we've already acquired the right-of-way. We have two more that are in escrow now. We have one more that we're still negotiating with the property owner. But the process, because it's federal funds, we have to use federal guidelines. So we, you know, get a title search, and to get title insurance on it, we get an appraisal, then we offer to the property owner. They either accept it or they respond back to us. And then we negotiate from what they say of what we think is a fair price to pay for that property.
Is Cody one of those guys that we're, you're talking about?
Cody, so he, yes. So he, and his is in escrow, but to get that title cleared on the right-of-way, had to go back to his mortgage company, and I believe that has been done. So we're just waiting, so Cody's.
Because from what I gathered, he was not happy with what we were, the county was proposing to buy. He was, thought it was a lot less, and you're taking like quite a bit of the yard.
So we're not taking anybody's yard on Davis Road, if you can see the picture there. Okay, so this is Davis, so this is Davis Road here. You can see this fence line here. So on the north side of Davis, we're only acquiring 30 feet. On the south side of Davis, requiring 170. So this here, we're already using this area as a road, it's just we don't have right-of-way.
Where's his property?
It's not that.
He's further back.
He's further back.
But, so all of these here, we're only paying for the property that we're already using.
And there's really nothing much on both those sides of the.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not moving the fence line on these properties on the north side. The south side, all this will be gone. So the south side, correct. Because the ultimate design right-of-way that we're getting is for a four-lane highway. This, right now, we're not doing that.
We're just getting the right-of-way.
We're just getting the right-of-way, we're not doing it. So this construction project here, the existing westbound lane, that's going to be the shoulder. So the road is not going to be moving any closer, correct. So that's going to be the shoulder, the existing westbound lane will be the shoulder. The existing eastbound lane will now become the westbound lane, so we're going to be widening over here. And all we're doing is widening with the eight-foot shoulders. We're not putting in a four-lane road for the whole way, yes.
Is there a distance the fence has to be from the road? Like for safety, like if somebody loses it and they go off the road, it gives them like 40 feet before they hit the fence?
The clear zone for 55 miles is 30 feet.
So you got to 30 feet from the asphalt to the.
But you don't typically, sometimes we don't even have that, because we don't have right-of-way. And then you can see, can see this truck here, when it's making the turn, the semi, it's going into the other lane. So we will make a through left and right lanes with wider radiuses so that the semis can get through that intersection.
Oh, my question, just real quickly, is, so we want 191 to be the main, you know, one. If we're doing, or they, or they, you know, signing, we're wasting money to try to do a four-lane on Davis Highway, but maybe we could say that money could be more directed to doing 191, because it just makes more sense for all the things that are happening like with the port?
This study was done back in 2015, was it before 2015 even? For the whole transportation, for the whole county, you know, when the long-range transportation plan was done. But if the port increases, like they say, you're going to even have more just passenger people going up and down. You're not going to have just semis. But no, we, ADOT's plan is not to have semis go on this road. I mean, semis are supposed to stay on the state highways.
Okay, so they would be pushing them to go.
We would be pushing them to go to 190, from 191 up to I-10. We don't dictate that they have to use that.
Hey, I'll be right back, Mr. Crosby, you got the chair.
I'm fine, Ms. Watkins. Would you care to talk about the, the ARS section that I had questioned about? And I have it in front of me, 48-3602. If you'd care to elaborate on that, you go right ahead.
Title 48 is special district, so this wouldn't be a special district. This is a Herf funds, so I'm, I'm not sure, I would have to look at 48602.
Okay, yeah, that's the one that you referred to me having to do with flood control district.
Oh, yeah, that's flood. So right now, that's the next, well, no, that's the next meeting is the flood control. This is the.
Okeydoke.
Engineering Herf.
Carry on.
Okay, and so we, we did apply for a grant, build grant, we applied in last month to try to get money to pay for constructing this. So we, currently, we don't have the funds even to construct this.
And you're talking about.
From Central to 191, and that's just over, it's 2.3 miles.
And again, widening the shoulders, it's not putting in the four-lane.
Yes, it's not putting in a four-lane. The four-lane will go when and if it's ever wanted, yes. This is just anticipation to try to get the right-of-way now.
Okay.
We're, we're trying to make the road safer because of the oversized loads, people have to pull off.
I see that a little out, at night, it's scary, when those, you know, trucks come.
So the next one is the Douglas Port of Entry in the connector. Now, this is an ADOT City County project. The design concept should be done by ADOT in March. And the preferred alternative currently is James Ranch Road. And this would be the connector road from the Port of Entry to Highway 80. We applied for a grant, we weren't awarded it, but the anticipated construction cost is 49 million. But we do have the $5 million for design, and ADOT is, will be handling the design on this project. The county was awarded 4.4 million through Arizona Smart Funds, County Herf Funds of $100,000, and the City of Douglas of $500,000. And this will be a four-lane divided highway with three roundabouts, and with quite a few culverts underneath, just because it's in a flood zone.
Right, so we're definitely two lanes in, two lanes out.
Two lanes in, two lanes out.
Both sides, right? So it's actually four lanes, right?
Four lanes, right. And then, so they have a median for turn lanes.
Ms. Watkins, how is the current plan going to feed into the state inspection lot? Is that going to be a problem, or is that going to work itself out?
Well, ADOT and GSA, the federal government, they are going to co-locate the inspection station. They're talking, they're still in the talking phase at the new Port of Entry. So the trucks would go through the federal Port of Entry, they come through Arizona's inspection, and not have to go down to Highway 191 where the current inspection station is.
So they're just making it more convenient?
A lot more convenient, yes. So the, but ADOT and the GSA are still.
Exactly, they could go to the left, sort of, if, if we kept it where it was, because I get a lot of questions, it's why are we going to spend money to relocate it when it's right there and it's got space? But as the trucks come up, they could go left, right? And this, this way, they're, they're captive, I guess, they have to go through it, there's no other.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, the Port of Entry at San Diego and Tijuana, the trucks parallel the border to the state inspection lot.
Yeah, so this, there, currently, the plan is to have it actually on the GSA's property. They have the AD.
So you said two roundabouts.
Yes.
Where are they, where are you going to put roundabouts?
At the corner, because the road goes south, and they will have a roundabout at the corner, then for the trucks, then to turn and go west to make a right-hand, and then a roundabout going into the POE. It's not on, it's, it's not shown there.
Oh, I'm trying to figure out where it would go. They got to be pretty big roundabouts, right?
Yes.
And, and we're looking at, so ADOT has 27.3 million, that's in their budget, right? And so from the meeting, we really need 80 million, so we need.
We only need about 50 million.
Okay, that's 80 million total, but with the 27.5 or whatever it is, then we need 50, you think?
No, total project cost for construction should be about 50 billion.
So what were they talking about, 80 million at ADOT and GSA?
No, sure.
See, that's a problem, we don't even know exactly what the number is that we need to go and lobby for, because is it 50, or is it, you know, I mean, so.
With 80 million, they were throwing in the whole cost of design.
For everything.
For everything.
Project cost, the total project cost is 80 billion, but not the construction cost, because some of that cost has already been done with the design concept report that they're, they're doing.
And you're talking like, when they're talking about groundbreaking in, in August of 2025, that's for the drainage system.
No, that's for GSA.
That's what GSA is doing, putting drainage.
That's, no, that, the groundbreaking in August is only GSA's site, not the connector road.
And you're talking about the GS site would be.
Port of Entry, the port, correct.
The actual building where people.
Correct. That groundbreaking is August, because that's a design-build project with GSA that they awarded to, I think it's Hanson Fields.
And so what is it, when is the drainage shooting happening?
When we do the construction on the road itself.
Okay, so that's separate.
That's separate. So that won't happen until next calendar year. We'll get it designed this calendar year, then we have to buy right-of-way, and the county is acquiring the right-of-way using funds that the city has for the project, because it's in the county, it's not in the city.
So then you're saying that in August, they're going to build the building without the road?
It's going to take them two years to, to build the building.
So they're assuming the money will come from the road? And the road itself is going to, we need to get.
49 million for construction.
49 million, because that includes the 27.5 that's already there, that we have to keep lobbying for.
Right.
So we need, so let's just say we need 16 million, right? Just to, just to round it up. Did you say 59?
43.
49. Okay, so 50 million.
Well, that's about the time you get a bill, cost increase.
Right, so it should be, let's just say 60 million. And so you're telling, the building's going to be built, and then the road is going to come after, because it's going to take two years to build the, the building.
Current plan is, the building should be opened up in the middle of 2028, and the road will be built by 2028, and the City of Douglas will have their sewer and water lines to the port by 20, middle of 2028.
In my head, it's like, you know, from, from, that's, we could all, and, and that's why I wanted to have a work session, so that we can get everyone here and everyone's talking the same thing.
So there is a project schedule that shows all this with GSA's timeline and everything, correct? Because GSA's, they're, they're breaking ground in August, but it's a design-build, so they haven't even designed it. They're still just doing the concept plan of where the buildings are located, but they'll start the earthwork and some of the other stuff at the same time they're building, they're finishing design of the buildings, because that's what a design-build is. It's not design, contract it, and then build it. It's building and design at the same time. So they'll know where the footprint is of the building, so they know, okay, this needs to go up five feet or whatever, and they'll do that. But they won't have finalized electrical and plumbing and everything.
And this is all assuming that everything's been followed in place, that money's going to come, that we're going to find 50 million for the road, and then the building has already been funded.
The building's already been funded, correct.
And then the drainage part is from GSA.
The drainage on our road is ours.
Ours.
Yes. All those culverts, all of the culverts on the connector road is part of the road.
And the grant that we lost were 43 million?
No.
23 million?
40.
Was it 40? I think it was 40 something, right?
43.
43 million is part that we need to commit, build that road that connects, that connects.
That was one of our options, yes.
And so now we've got to go back and find another.
We will apply for more grants. We will continue to apply for grants.
Continue to apply, but, yes, we need to maybe, that's where I think we really need to lobby for, okay.
You got to talk to Siskamai.
Another project we had, and this was the Ramsey Canyon Multi-Use Path. And this, so there's a multi-use path that goes on Stafford Lane all the way up to Buffalo Soldier Trail. That's an existing, and then once it gets on Ramsey, it goes up, it goes west. And so this would continue that multi-use path east down to Highway 92, being on the north side of Ramsey Road. So this was just a project assessment that was done by the serviced NPO, and with an anticipated construction cost of 2.3 million.
And where's that money coming from?
It would be a grant. The project assessment serviced NPO is federal funds, you know, that the serviced NPO, I think they get around $600,000 a year, and that serviced NPO is.
I went to their meeting yesterday.
Okay, so they, you know, that's the city service, which you could city in the county.
Did your screen burn?
Yeah.
I think it's.
Okay, so this would be, so it's a different funding, it's a different funding than roads.
So bike paths and stuffers. Charge every bicycle is 50 cents every time they go down the bike path.
Because they have a Subaru.
I'm not, yeah, it goes back to the Subarus, but anyways.
So this is an extension of the path that's along Ramsey Canyon, and that goes from Ramsey up to Buffalo Soldier Trail and serviced, and it is heavily used by the residents. Then.
That'll probably be the headline in the chair. Antonorius wants to charge bicycles 50 cents. I'm being facetious, Terry Joe, if you're listening.
Then we can, the projects that we have in-house, both those private, they're, you know, consultants, is that we have around 63 bridges in the county, and ADOT inspects those bridges every two years. And so we've hired consort, because some of our bridges are over 100 years old. So we've hired consort, consort engineering, structural engineers to give us a 20-year replacement plan of these bridges, because some are structurally deficient or structurally obsolete.
Do you do like a weight analysis on it?
Yes, we have.
And then restrict it?
Yes. In fact, this picture here is of Rucker Road Canyon Bridge, and that has a 5-ton load limit on it.
So what if somebody violates that and breaks our bridge?
Well, if we catch them, then their insurance would have to pay to replace it. And that happened on Hereford Bridge in 2006 or '07.
They gave in and gets, probably going to be there when we get there.
And the Hereford Bridge, we did get a new one-lane bridge out of that. So we applied for off-system bridge funding, which is federal funds for bridges that aren't on a federally functioned classified road. And the process of off-system bridges, you apply for a scoping grant, and we have that for this project. And then you get a design grant, and then you get a funding grant for construction. So it's around a three-to-five-year process to get this done. So we have that on Rucker Canyon, and we've applied for more off-system bridges on Leslie Canyon Road itself. So we, we continue to apply for these funds to, you know, to get.
There's a bridge on Pierce Road, it's wooden. Every time I drive over, it goes.
And that one, we really, that's on the list, we need to look at it, just replace it with a box culvert, correct?
That's a, that is a shaky bridge.
It is, yes. And but that doesn't, and that doesn't qualify as a bridge, because for a bridge, technically, it's over 20 feet, and that doesn't mean it's a bridge structure like the photo. If you have culverts, and you have enough culverts together, and the width is over 20 feet, it's a bridge structure.
Yeah, that's like a bridge, that's like an old rail.
But it is not 20 feet long, yeah.
Yeah, bridge, yeah.
Correct. But yes, no, we do want to. But yes, no, we do want to replace that. That you just have to replace some of those boards.
Do you guys do that?
Yes, it's on a bridge, well, the Ops does, Highland does.
Huh.
And they, and it, the cost here, because this is also a wooden bridge, and so we.
That's a wooden bridge, too?
This is also a wooden bridge. And then our like.
You were talking about culverts, but what, what is the width, you said?
Twenty feet.
So if it's more than twenty feet, you got to do a bridge, if it's less.
No, no, the definition of a bridge is twenty feet, it could be box culverts, round culverts, or a bridge structure here, and it's still classified as a bridge.
Four box culverts in there, and put a road across top, but that's still a bridge.
Correct. The bridge structure that we did on Davis Road at mile post nine, those are arch concrete culverts. They're not a bridge structure like this with piers. And that's just federal guidelines, and federal, if anything is over twenty feet, it's a classified as a bridge, and so then the states are required to inspect those every twenty years, correct, every two years. So we get reports every two years on all of our, of the sixty-three bridge structures that we own. And then Leslie Canyon Culvert Replacement, and there's a few culverts on Leslie Canyon that we're, um, still wanting to replace. In-house also is Kansas Settlement Road, because that road is deteriorating. So we went out and had Western Technologies Core Forty, um, locations, so that we know what type of structural, um, asphalt we need to put on top of the road, depending on what the base is, because the base is failing. So even if we went and put two inches of asphalt on the top of Kansas Settlement Road, it, it would crack, that, all those cracks would reflect through the asphalt, and in five years, it would just look as it is. Plus, on Kansas Settlement Road, because of drainage, if you raise that up two inches, you're going to impact drainage on the road. So this is the first part of this, so we have them, they will give us, uh, some recommendations, and we might have to take and do a few miles at a time on Kansas Settlement. And then in Sun sights, uh, the, the frontage road there in the town of Sun sights, we need to replace the sidewalks, because they don't comply with ADA, and so we're doing, uh, just design survey and studying the options. We've talked to a lot of the property owners. We have right of way in some places, others we don't, we would only work within our right of way.
Where's this?
Sun sight in front of the.
The front row on each side of one ninety-one?
No, the, from, um, it's where the store is, where the, the, well, the one that closed.
Yeah.
Um, it's where the post office is, and the hardware store, and the restaurants.
Yeah.
It's just the one block, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so that's the, that's a county road?
Correct. That's not, that's not an ADOT frontage road, that is a county road.
Okay.
Getting an education, it's.
You think, you think that the frontage was part of the state?
Well, or, or, well, it was just part of the development when Sun sights, as a community, was developed, because it was a, it was a master planned community with the
Right.
golf course and everything that's out there, you know, and that's why they have curbing on the roads.
I see.
And the deterioration of the sidewalks, so we do own sidewalks. I mean, we have sidewalks and paths um, in El Frida and St. David, along ADOT's roads, but we maintain it. And so we're doing that, and then the Stafford, this photo here is Stafford Lane, and this is the multi-use path, the existing multi-use path. And you can just kind of see on the edge there, the chip seal. But this was a, this is a public roadway for developers, and there's vacant land there that those property owners need to use this pathway to get to their property, and there's a few people now that are building roads there, or correction, wanting to build homes there. So we need to modify what we have on our bike path so that they can use it to get into their properties without impacting and driving on the bike paths. And then Foothills Parking Lot, um, it's, I think still on the plans to upgrade the, because parking lot, and so we will go out for bids on that parking lot.
And that's the county.
And that's a county building over in Serviced. And then you had asked last time about, you know, paving, what you could do in the Babacum area, Babacumare area.
Yeah, that subdivision.
For Ronald Reagan, so I, I did a little bit of research on that one. And so that's about six thousand acres, that was, this whole, this is the record of survey, because so that was developed by Record of Survey with lot splits, it's, but it's an unregulated subdivision. Ronald Reagan Road was chip sealed, and the property owners had their own maintenance agreement within itself, and they were paying like a hundred and fifty dollars a year, but they disbanded that in twenty twenty-one, so they don't have that, but they did have it, and Ronald Reagan itself was paved or chip sealed. So if you look at the one corner, this one here, um, and the, these, this type of unregulated subdivisions by Record of Surveys, they happen throughout the county, there's probably about fifty or more in the whole county.
Yeah.
And so this shows you the one, and that's, um, I think that was just over six hundred acres, it was a lot, too. And so of that six hundred acres, then whoever bought it from the original developer broke it into another Record of Survey for forty-acre parcels. So then you had thirteen or sixteen forty-acre parcels. And then this is the assessor's map, so you can see all these little parcels now, like these are now, you know, four, so if you had a forty-acre parcel, this is owned RU four, you could have ten homes. So out of that six thousand acres, you know, you could have fifteen hundred homes in there, possibly. But they have access to Highway ninety, and then also to Turner, Turner Lane that comes off of Highway eighty-two. But, so this is just one of the subdivisions like that. This is another one here that shows more of the land that was divided into four-acre parcels that comes off of Truman Road, it's Truman Road. And then Palominas Ranch, in, uh, the San Pedro area, most of that, north and south of Highway ninety-two, north of Hereford Road and the Mosin area, most all of that was developed by forty-acre records of surveys. And this is the, you know, the, the homes, the little yellow dots is the, you know, actual homes that was done from that subdivision.
Like, you know, Coronado Estates, you know, that goes way back to, I think the seventies.
So, so Coronado Estates, some of those are Record of Survey, but some of those were actually platted subdivisions, because before, I'll have to ask Dan, but before the nineteen eighties, I think, people could subdivide their properties without going through a whole regulated process, but then once planning and zoning, then there's more regulations on that. Um, it's changed, so when those subdivisions were done, the roads weren't improved, some of the roads weren't even put in. There's roads, and some of those lots are a tenth of an acre, I mean, there's not even, some of the, you would not be able to put septic tanks on those lots, on some of them.
Because when I went out, you know, there's some roads that we maintain, and we, that just don't even have homes on them. I mean, do you ever look at it and then like say, okay, there's, this has been, we've been doing this for a long time, nobody's out there?
Yes, we have, we have a list of roads that we could potentially drop from maintenance, because there's one just off of, um, Goff, uh, Goffling, or.
Oh, it's Goff, anyway.
You know, the Goff, the Goff, north of the Goff Forest there, because we maintain about two miles of road in there, and there's four houses.
Is that the one that goes north of the country club?
North of the country club, but on, on the, on the, on Goff Road, north of the country club, and it's, I, I call it the circle subdivisions because.
It has that illegal division where they built nice homes, but I guess the mayor thought that that road was given from the county to the city.
Part of Washington was, but, because it was, then it was annexed in, but not the other stuff.
Not that road that's, goes, like, you know, parallel with the country club?
Um, no.
East and west.
East and west, no, that is a county road.
Because he, I guess he thinks they have to maintain it. He thinks it's given, that we gave it to the.
So we, no, we maintained that one, that goes east and west.
Okay.
Um, the city does own their detention pond, they have a pond there, that is ten feet deep or so, and so they, that is their property in the county.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, so that, that's the end of that meeting, but if you want to close the meeting.
Oh, okay, we're done?
Yeah.
Oh, we're going to.
We have to open it up again. Yes.
Okay, all right, all the, uh, public works, I'm sorry, engineering is closed, and now.